Four, five, six.
Six.
We got six.
Oh. I was right here.
He's not coming.
Oh, okay.
The only thing we got to see is-
We're gonna be illegal at five o'clock.
Yeah, I'm like just on my phone.
And then a little announcement about the train thing and then probably table those other two again.
That clock says five. Mine's just a little bit before, but we can go.
Or leave it, leave more to take.
It's, uh, five o'clock. I guess we'll call the meeting to order, uh, the June 22nd, uh, City of Sandusky Planning Commission Meeting. Um, I would ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. McGory?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Zuloff?
Here.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Whalen? Ms. Castile?
Here.
Mr. Pajali?
Here.
And I think we understand that Mr. Whalen is not planning to come as a conflict.
Correct, yeah.
Do we need to excuse him or just move on?
You ask that every time.
Yeah.
No, you don't, you don't need to.
Okay, we don't need to excuse him. All right. Um, but thank you for the answer. Uh, next item on the agenda is the matter of approving the minutes from the May 25th, uh, Commission Meeting. Um, has anyone had a chance to review those minutes and is anybody prepared to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move they be approved as distributed.
Second.
Thank you, gentlemen. It's been moved and seconded. Um, I guess we can just do all in favor of approving the minutes.
Yes, sir.
Um, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, uh, those minutes are approved. Uh, under new business, it's my understanding that we have a request to advance the second item up to the, the first, the first, uh, place. And so the application is by SNS Realty, LTD. They've submitted a site plan application for a bid, business addition to 1935 Cleveland Road, parcel number 5701378.000. Staff, uh, you could give us a report?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the site is zoned general business. Uh, the surrounding zoning to the north and the east is commercial recreation. To the south is general business and a roadside business, and to the west is also general business. The surrounding uses of this property are business. Existing use of this site is a mix of commercial and business. Proposed use is gonna stay the same, commercial and business. The applicant is proposing to expand their kitchen by 240 square feet. They, the applicant's also stated the accommodation is to service seasonal, um, patrons for their patio, um, and that they do not anticipate any patrons to be expanded with this proposal. The total site here expands over 5.89 acres. There's several hotels on the site, um, this current restaurant, a bowling alley, and also some retail. Proposed height of the kitchens, 14 feet. The total parking spaces shared between the mixed-use development is 352 spaces. And in addition, we want to take away any of the existing parking that had been approved previously. Staff's determined that since no, or since no spaces are gonna be required, no additional parking is necessary. Um, that is because the expansion is not going to increase floor area of, um, restaurant space for patrons. It's only expanding the kitchen. The applicant did state that they don't anticipate any more, um, customers based on this expansion. It's just to service more conveniently the outside patio. Um, so with no additional parking requirements, no additional landscaping is required. All area standards are met with this proposal. All yard regulations are met with this proposal. Um, no other departments had any concerns or objections. Based on our findings, staff recommends the approval of the proposed site plan at 1935 Cleveland Road with the following conditions. And that's that all applicable permits are obtained through the engineering, building, and planning departments.
Thank you, Mr. Oaks. Does the applicant wish to add anything to what's been presented?
I'll do, if you have any questions.
All right, thank you. Do any members of the commission have questions for staff or applicant? I, I have a question. I, I was thinking while you were talking.
Sure.
Um, did I understand you to say that, that no parking lot, spaces are being taken away?
That is correct, yes.
Any other questions? Anybody care to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the application subject to the staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, it's been moved and seconded. If the secretary could call the roll, please.
Mr. McGory?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Zuloff?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Castile?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Uh, application passed. Thank you, gentlemen. Good luck with the project.
Great day.
All right, you too. Next on the agenda is the City of Sandusky, um, submitted a site plan application for renovation of the existing Justice Center. And I guess, I was gonna make a wise comment about denying it, but, I guess, uh, ask the staff to present that application to us.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Let me, I'll jump in real quick. I just wanted to say that since this building is not getting a building addition, it's unclear in the code whether it needs planning approval at all. Uh, it's a high-profile case. It's a City of Sandusky project. We really wanted to bring it to you so you understand the scope of the project and what, uh, what the building, what changes there will be. So there's no increase of the footprint. They're gonna change a little bit about the parking circulation and how the general public will access the building. And so that's really why we brought the site plan to Planning Commission today. I'll also mention this has been through months-long development process where the Planning Division has been involved in the design uh, of the, of the project as well.
I have a question just, and I was, I'm, I'm no architect or engineer, but looking at the plans, and I, and I'm in that bill, or have been over the years in that building a lot. The two wings of it, then there's a, a, not much of a grassy area, but a little grassy area in between with a big antenna. Did I see that there's gonna be another crosswalk added to that? Do you know?
So Mr. Oaks will cover the normal presentation that we give for site planning, so he'll touch on that a little bit. And also the project architect is in attendance and can cover any questions and give a little overview as well.
Thank you. I guess go ahead with the presentation.
Have some technical difficulties, hold on. PowerPoint.
I don't know why there's two of them up there.
So the site at 222 Meg Street is zoned public facilities. The surrounding uses to the north is downtown business. To the east is also public facilities. To the south is local business and also commercial service. To the west is downtown business and then our 2F2 family residential. Surrounding uses are both a mix of businesses and residential. The existing use of this site is public facilities. The proposed use is still gonna be public facilities. So the applicant's proposing to renovate the Justice Center. It will still house the police and court staff in their day-to-day operations. Um, the court section of the building will operate during business hours while the police will have 24-hour operations. The building's use and occupancy will not change. Neither will the footprint. The parking's actually being expanded rather than decreased, and also the uses aren't being changed. So to Ms. Blair's point, um, it is kind of a gray area on if this does need approval, but, for safety measures, we did bring it to the commission tonight. The height of the building's gonna remain the same. The parking on the parcel will actually be increasing by 45 spaces. Um, so staff has determined that no additional parking is necessary. They well exceed the requirements. Landscaping's standards are satisfied. Ten trees on the site on the northern landscaping, um, island there. It's rather extensive, nearly 8,000 square feet of lawn area there, which is well beyond the 900-square-foot requirement for this site. So all exterior lighting that's proposed will be dark-skies friendly. Area standards are all satisfied. Yard regulations are satisfied, and all use standards are, um, satisfied. And they're also, also adding extra landscaping beyond the requirement that's gonna further beautify the site, um, which staff definitely thinks is a plus. There's no concerns from other departments. So based on these findings, staff recommends the approval of the proposed site plan at 222 Meg Street with the following conditions. And that's that all applicable permits are obtained through the building, engineering, and planning departments.
Thank you, Mr. Oaks. Uh, Mr. Miller?
Are we ready for questions? I have a few.
Yes.
I, I don't mean to parse too much of, uh, the semantics, but is dark-sky friendly the same as dark-sky compliant? Or is there really any distinction? Do we have a dark-sky code requirement at all?
We do not. We just know that that's the preference of the commission and, and also it's, um, Mr. Klein's an advocate, so has been maintaining that that be the case.
Maybe I'm wrong. Dark-sky compliant and friendly, that's the same thing?
The way that Mr. Oaks presented it, that would be my understanding is this.
Okay. Next, um, said about occupancy isn't really changing. Is the rec. department there now and won't be there in the future? I saw the floor plan. Are they cement ab? Are they here or what's?
The rec. department has, uh, a temporary home with a three-year lease with an option to extend that lease at the Mills, the former Mills School on Mills Street across from the golf cars, course in the south side.
I think I must have known that at some point. And then when I was looking at the, uh, site diagram, um, of the proposed plan, it looks like there's secured parking, but I didn't really see a, a code in the legend of the red dotted line around all, that's like enclosed in the fence, like a compound for staff parking and stuff is in the secure thing now?
That's correct. That's the best practice for justice centers nationwide is to add secure parking. So renovations are, my understanding, and the team can speak on this too, is that, uh, that's best practice for renovations. And we do have a slide in here that shows the type of, it's a decorative fence that they'll be using. They'll be gated key-card access, uh, from Washington Street and then also through the parking lot from Meg Street for employees and for the police vehicles. And then the public parking will maintain, that's, that's open access to the public parking. The other thing that's changing is the public entry is going back to its original public entry from Meg Street with, uh, some beautification treatment there. And to, uh, Mr. McGory's original point, there is a new courtyard and a, an access corridor going through that's kind of that small blue line. That's in addition to the property where the circulation can connect interior to the building because the different uses in this structure have different security needs. The police department obviously has high-security areas and some public areas, and same with the court. So the way that that works internal to the building, they needed that connection of the corridor, um, to create that courtyard.
And then my last question. In the area on the map bounded by the construction or the, the project area, it includes the skate park and stuff, and I don't really see that in the renderings. What, what happens to that space?
Those uses are staying. That, the red outline on the, in the packet shows the entire parcel. We did, we were careful to maintain, um, where the, the, the existing footprint today. So if we ever needed to bring access through a public roadway or a private drive behinds there for any future development, that that would still be available. And, um, my general understanding is the skate park is to remain and that's, uh, scoped for some updates upcoming, um, sooner than later from what I've heard internally. There is a cell tower. I think the team can, I think something's moving out of the courtyard onto the side of the building. The team can mention that if, if you have a question about that.
Yeah, I, I noticed that, but those are my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Miller, you have some questions. I'm sorry, Jackson. You're Mr. Miller.
Uh, yes, I have one question. Uh, I, I see from the drawing that you're forcing the general public to go to the front of the building for entry. And since the police department is 24/7, will that, will those doors be open 24/7 for, to the general public?
I defer that question.
I can speak on that. Um, if we can go to the plan, I'm not sure. Can we skip one more maybe?
Well, you want, I would say we have renderings, we've got-
Okay, so we're not showing the plan. So as you enter the main front door, we have two vestibules. One would be the court and one would be to the police lobby. That police lobby will have 24/7 access where, as you go into the court vestibule, or court lobby, that's only during business hours. So the court lobby will have 24/7 access.
Let me, let me understand that. The court lobby will have 24/7?
Sorry, police lobby, sorry.
Okay.
There we go.
So there, within one vestibule, there's a door to the left and a door straight, going straight into the building. That leads you to the, the court lobby, which will be locked in, on business hours. If you go to the left, you'll always have access in there, so.
Okay, so this is, that front door is going to be the way that a citizen would go to the police department if they needed to at 1:00 in the morning?
Correct.
Okay.
So no entrance or exit on the, or, uh, no, no entrance on the north facade?
Uh, that is correct.
Okay. And then, is it gonna be like employee park, uh, entrance only on the east? Because, uh, that's, because it's within the security area.
Yeah, this is a great image for that.
And then that's, that's secured, is that secured just for vehicles or is that secure from, uh, pedestrian access to?
Both of the, both.
Right, so it's completely, so, so all the, this, the, basically the, the east and, uh, south facade are security areas, not open to the public?
Correct.
All right, so that the only public access is from the west?
Yes, from, from Meg Street.
Um, it seems, seems to be a bit of a hike from the, uh, the handicap parking, and there's not a lot of handicap parking.
There's a, a walkway to this.
Yeah, no, I see, I see that, but there's not a lot of handicap parking near the, um, near the entrance. Or is, does that denote handicap, those hashes there, the inaccessible?
The north, yeah, on the north side of the-
Right.
Yeah, there's a small north-south walkway from the main entry that goes directly to the handicap parking.
Well, anyway, I think Mr. Jackson still had the floor here, but I-
No, that's, I, I was just wondering, because there's only, as far as general public is concerned, there's only one entrance, right? To the building?
Right.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think that would be, uh, similar to the Perkins Township Hall. You know, they built a, a new township hall, and it's, it's the same type of arrangement where you can go right into the township hall. And then to your right is the police department, and you always have access to that. And it seems to function well. I don't know, it, did, did you, were you going to give a presentation?
Yeah, we do have a couple sites.
Oh, okay, may, maybe, uh, if we, yeah, if we allowed them to do their presentation, maybe they can answer.
Oh, okay, I thought that would, we, good.
Why don't you proceed?
Okay, so, um, this is a schematic site plan showing, um, what we've talked, oh, perfect. What we've talked about, um, in a lot of these questions. So, uh, the public parking will be on the north side of the site, um, with a sidewalk down towards the, the Meg Street entrance, the main public entrance. The red dash line shows the area of the secured, um, uh, decorative fence that will, uh, be for the secured parking for the staff. Um, and again, we, we already touched on the three staff entries, um, into the building. Landscaping, the three main areas, I guess, of, of primary landscaping would be in the courtyard, for staff use only. Um, at the main entrance, then, uh, surrounding the, the front doors, we have, um, some landscaping. And then we're relocating the, the fallen officer memorial from the southwest corner to the north, um, side of the property near the parking lot. Mark, do you wanna?
Um, seemed like everyone was curious about what was going on in the courtyard. That's where, currently where the radio antenna is for the police department. That is being relocated to the southeast corner of the building near the garage doors. Uh, we're, uh, gonna have a, a landscape island. That radio antenna will be placed there.
Freestanding or on the building?
It'll be freestanding, not on the building. Um, we are also updating, uh, the generator for, uh, emergency backup for the building to a natural gas generator to be located on the south side of the building. We're providing a new water service to the building. It currently has a three-inch. We're providing a new three-inch, but we're also adding a six-inch fire line and a fire department, fire department connection per discussions with the, uh, fire chief. And we are, uh, improving the sanitary sewer system, uh, and working with the public works department. They've had some issues trying to maintain that. Uh, so we're gonna be updating that system, and we are providing a brand-new storm sewer system for all of the roof drains on the entire building, uh, to drain out to Washington Street. Generally, we're keeping things the same on the site. The only thing that's really changing is down on Washington Street. Currently, you kinda go in and there's a horseshoe drive that kinda goes in with some parking that's miscellaneously placed. Uh, we're securing that for the court parking on the south side. There will be a gated access off of Washington for police and the courts and employees. And there will also be gated ass, access through the northern drive, uh, parking lot that exists. And we're changing that from angled parking to 90-degree parking. There, the lots, the north, uh, is also the access for the sailing club. That will be maintained access 100% during construction. Uh, so we won't be addressing anything over there. We'll make sure that there's access at all times for the public and for the, the members of the club there, so.
Um, I'm curious, and I just had the thought, uh, during construction, are the police gonna be operating out of the building? Are the courts gonna be operating? Are they gonna all, both go someplace else?
Sorry. Yeah, so the police will certainly be operating out of the facility, and they're gonna be moving, uh, to, you know, shift it around through the building as needed. The courts, we're working on trying to figure out if there's a, a way that we might be able to relocate them to another facility that's really the judge's desire. He really wants to be somewhere else during construction, so we're trying to accommodate that request. And we're looking at a couple different locations, but, uh, you know, we're, we're not 100% sure at this time, but we are leaning to try to get him somewhere. And we're, we're hoping that if we do that, we can get that resolved within the next three, four months, so.
Just curious. Any other questions from commit, the commission? Mr. Miller?
Yeah, just interested in the, uh, circulation in the secured parking. It looks like there are two aprons off Washington Street, one on the west and one on the east. Am I misreading that?
No, that's correct.
So is it like you go in on the eastern one and come out on the western one, or?
Yes, yes. The eastern, uh, access, the furthest east will be full. Access in and out, the western one, uh, is part of the, the remaining horseshoe. That will be exit only, so.
And did I understand you to say that also on the north, there's entry into that secure area, or no?
Yes, through the existing parking lot there. Um, just at the very eastern end of the building, uh, there is a gate and key-card access where the large S-stripping is there.
Okay, thank you.
I, I didn't think I followed that. Did you, Mr. Miller? I, are you talking about access to the north parking lots?
I'm talking about access to the eastern parking lot from the north.
Okay.
And I don't really see an apron there or any, I see a green area around it and the, and the red dash line, and I didn't really infer where the entrance would be. But perhaps it's from the parking lot, from the public parking lot.
Go back to where you, we lost it here.
Which one?
There.
Oh, that one?
Okay, that one.
So if you see where the word Megs is written?
Yeah.
There's an apron just below that.
Yeah.
That's the, the apron to the-
As it is now, right?
Yes.
Right.
That's the existing apron.
So it's, it's for, for, for the public, that's a blind alley?
That's where they're gonna come in and park, in that lot right there.
Uh, right. And, well, I suppose we hope that that'll never fill up, right? So the use of the, the parking lot to the north, still city property?
That's correct.
We just are, we're estimating that that's not gonna be needed at all for this facility?
Based on discussions with staff, um, they, they have not had that need, but it can be used.
Right. Be, because it, you know, it means if someone pulls in there and finds no place to park, they basically have to maneuver a U-turn and come back out.
That's why we have the larger striped, uh, hatch area at the end, so they can kinda do a three-point turn.
So it seems like you would perhaps sacrifice no parking spots by connecting the two instead of having a blind alley for, uh, the people who don't have access to the secure lot?
My understanding is in, in talking with staff, um, the connection between the two is something they don't desire at this point
Okay.
for future planning purposes.
All right, just, just, just for clarif, just, thanks for clarifying that.
I, I'd like to comment on that. Over the years, I, I go in and out of that building a lot. And there, between those two northerly lots, the one right next to the building and the one further north, there's always a parking place. But as it exists now, you can drive through, through it. Personally, when it is busy, the, the one closer to the building is more full up. If, the other one, usually there's a parking space. I don't think sacrif, my personal feeling is what Mr. Zuloff just said, I think is a better way, is sacrifice a couple, one or two lots, or spaces, I should say, to let you have a circular flow through that whole thing. That's my personal opinion. I'm not an architect or an engineer, but I've been in and out of that parking lot.
Well, you wouldn't, you, you wouldn't even need the hatch area, so you'd, you'd sacrifice zero, or, uh, you, you, you might, you might sacrifice zero spots, but that's, again-
It's just something, that's something that, that I think to rethink about.
Something, something could, could be corrected if it becomes a problem too, but yeah, I agree with, I agree with you, Pete.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Just a reminder that all the staff parking is now consolidated to the east of the building where it's not currently, and they're adding spaces there. So the public lot is expected to be much more open than it is.
Right, right. The, the demand is low. The problem is, you know, it's just the issue of, you know-
Turn back around and go out the same way with people coming in. And it really is more convenient the way it exists right now where you can, there's flow. I, I come off of Meg Street, go in, and either go around and out the north lot one, or all the way around the back of the police department, which I don't think is gonna happen anymore. I don't think you- So you, you're just gonna have cars coming into the existing parking lot if it's dead-end at the end. And then as they leave, whenever, either they don't find a place or they're done with their business, they're going back out the same way again. And I, I, I truly think there's plenty of parking places here. So if you had to give up a couple, I think having that flow would be a better way, but that's my thought.
Uh, Pete, it also, uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, it also seems, uh, that, um, by sacrificing just a few secured parking spots, you could probably avoid some construction work and just make it go more, leave it more or less the way it is and, and, and move the gate, uh, uh-
I hate to make the plan for this, but I don't know how many they need for-
Yeah, yeah, no, well, but I'm, I'm just making the point that, that, uh, it would, it would achieve the, the same thing. Anyway, uh, just, I, I don't feel strongly about it. It's, it's just, uh, an observation. This, that's, we're supposed to be deliberating this, so. Uh, also, it seems like, uh, uh, you know, uh, these days, you could, you could have the need for more than one, more than three handicap spots. It's already a bit of a hike to the, to the only door available to the public, so, just an observation.
I don't wanna belabor this, but just by way of further explanation, I'm not thinking that the, the traffic is going to increase from what it is right now. And I don't know how many secured spots you really need, so I would be hesitant to say sacrifice any of those. But I feel very strongly that between the lot immediately to the north of the, the existing building and the one further north, there's more, there's always gonna be more than sufficient, I'll call it customer parking. And I just think that, that better traffic flow would be worth thinking about, so. Any, any other comments?
Can I, can I add to that real quick?
Yeah.
I just wanna point out that we obvi, you know, back in 16, 17, 18, we did a very detailed analysis with administration, courts, and police on exactly the number of parking spots, the maximum number of parking spots that would be needed for each. And whether it's secured or not-secured parking, and the layout that we have now far exceeds what was needed for police and for court. And in talking to the police chief, it, they have very few residents, very few people that come to the police station. So most of that would be taken by court. I'd also like to point out, we're going through the Meg Street reconstruction project, and you can see on, a lot of on-street parking in that same block that would be adding to it. And the reason, the main reason that we didn't connect those, there's, there's two reasons, really. The big one being that, that access, that we were trying to maintain a secondary access into the sailing club and into the, the south end of Battery Park. And we wanted to use that north parking lot for that. Also, we, we know that the majority of- Also, we know that the majority of the users of the skate park and that pump track park on that north end, and we were trying to avoid that conflict of people trying to use the building with the other access points and the people trying to use that other access to the Battery Park and to the skate park. So that was the big reason why we felt that the connection wasn't needed, plus we exceeded the parking anyway. But we can certainly look at it. I'm not opposed to connecting it. It's not a big deal to me, one way or another. You know, it's just whether it's necessary and whether we want to have that conflict between the two uses.
Pete, if I could follow up on that, before you go, Eric. Yeah, so, looking at the big picture, Battery Park is going to be redeveloped, and there will be events there. So it would be a shame to overkill on secured parking and not have that parking available. You know, we could have a huge event and thousands of visitors potentially, if not. So we have a policy and a philosophy of shared parking, and so we need to think about this parking of being used, not just during the week for the court, but if it's public parking, that it, and it's publicly owned property, that it be available for other public use, say, for an event on the weekend. So let's think big picture and not just sub-optimize on this site. I had other questions, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Zuloff.
We touched on dark sky. I didn't under, was that a, going to be a condition, Mr. Oaks, for dark sky? You brought up, I didn't quite catch what you said about dark sky.
Through the chair, if I may. It wasn't a condition, it was just a fact from the applicant and the architects stating that that will be the lighting sources used for this project. Planning had, not a concern, but an observation that there is a residential site near the parking, so having lighting that isn't going to negatively impact their use there was definitely a question, and the dark sky will accomplish that.
Thank you. By the way, I think the only lighting we have, unless it was removed, was that city-owned property would, light would be shielded from upper stories, I think is the wording, and I don't know if that still even exists in the code, but it did. And we've made a couple of attempts at more modern lighting standards. It's sort of a tough-moving target with the change in lighting technology, but I'd be, feel better if we said dark sky compliant, or that was a condition. But in any event, if that's their intent, that helps a lot. But we've held, we've made full cutoff lighting and/or dark sky compliant as a condition of many other sites, so we probably should, you know, at least hold ourselves to the same standard. The skate park, I understand, so just to clarify, this site, did you finish your presentation or did we get off on a tangent here?
Just have a couple of exterior renderings, but that doesn't change anything.
Why don't, sorry, why don't you, I'll come back to my.
Why don't you finish that?
Okay, so just looking at the exterior, again, this isn't for the site plan approval, but just so you're aware, what we're doing, so this is the north parking lot, showing the existing curtain walls. We're demoing those, refreshing the exterior with some new materials and paint.
That's a good word, refreshing.
Yeah. And then this is the south side, showing from the secured parking area, and here we have images of what that secured fence will look like and the trash surrounds. And then also in the top right, you can see the lighting, exterior site lighting that we were just talking about. Again, refreshing the exterior around, paint, new materials, composite panels and metal panels. And then this is the south side, the secured entrance to the staff area and the garage for the police. The granite boxes on the court and the current records office will remain. And then this is the front elevation, showing we have a new monument sign and bench integrated into the landscaping. And then there's the relocated fallen officers memorial, right off the parking lot. I think that's it.
By the way, the luminary head that I saw, that's horizontal, right? Not tilted up?
Correct.
Unnecessarily, okay. I'm sure, I'm sure the original architect thinks you're vandalizing his work, but I think it looks great.
You have any more questions?
Oh, I did. So just to reiterate what I heard, we're limited to the, just because you're showing the property doesn't mean that you're working on the site plan that we saw, and the parcel isn't changing at all. The additional part of the parcel's not changing at all, right? The skate park will be unaffected. I don't know how we can talk about the site plan, we can defend it by, there are a few changes to the site itself, but I don't know how we can talk about the site plan without talking about the context of the plan for Battery Park. The master plan, well, I guess it's the downtown, it's now incorporated as the downtown master plan. The Battery Park section is now incorporated as part of that, but I think we have to at least keep that in mind and envision that. And I think a strong part of the concept there is, is that there probably will be a road going, the obvious place is down Washington and along the water closer to, closer to the water and around, probably connecting to Water Street. So as long as we keep that in mind, I'm reassured to see that Washington Street remains open and that this does not affect the back part of that parcel. I think it's sort of ironic, there was the old Kinsel-McKline study, which at this point is probably at least twenty-five years old. We're all about roundabouts and wedging them in here and there. And one of them was a roundabout here at Megs in Washington. So I'm mildly disappointed to see that as we do this, we're not at least exploring that, because in my opinion, it's a possibility right now, and now would be the time to do it, but, oh, well. Antenna, we have an antenna colocation ordinance. Would this, is this going to be a larger antenna, or just a, and my question to staff at the law department would be, are we subject to our own colocation ordinance? And is this a huge antenna? If we're moving this antenna, do we have to look at that colocation ordinance and say, is this the best? Do we really need another, you know, another mast here? Or we would, we would be well within our rights to at least ask for, maybe even demand space on the tower that's located behind City Hall, the old City Hall. So just, just saying, just asking. I don't even, how tall is that tower, would you?
I believe it's sixty feet.
Fifty feet?
Sixty.
Sixty?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would seem, if we are subject to our own colocation ordinance, it would just seem to make more sense to, in other words, stick in another mast that may go, that we may not need later, to at least explore the possibility of co-locating. If not, and I'm sure the law director, probably, I wouldn't ask you to say off the top of your head if, whether we're subject to our own ordinance or not.
I mean, we're going to do everything in compliance with our ordinances and everything we have to do for the public process, and if that's an issue through the planning and development of this process, it will get handled.
It's something to think about, that, you know, nobody ever thinks about that, so that's why I'm bringing it up.
If I could, this will be moving the existing antenna to a new location, it's not an additional antenna. Just want to clarify that.
Right, and again, I'm not, I don't feel strongly about it, I'm just saying, probably nobody thought of it, and I'm just bringing it up as, hey, you have, you might have an option here, instead of moving a rusty old tower, maybe let's, I'm going to guess that that tower might have been there before the tower behind City Hall was there, and it might be, might be an option, I don't know.
So we're not relocating the existing tower, we're replacing it in a new location.
So you're replacing the tower? So it will be a new one?
Correct.
Again, it, that makes it an even stronger case to await, let's look at the option of using the tower that's right there behind City Hall, because they are required to at least talk to you about it, and within reason, just, I think.
We did look at that with the previous IT director, and that was not an option.
Thank you. That helps to know.
Simple answer.
Yeah.
Any further questions?
Sorry for implying that you wouldn't have thought of that.
Any other questions from the commission? I'm presuming that we're supposed to vote on this site plan application, is that correct? Okay. Would anybody care to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Just on discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Zuloff.
It's my understanding that minor changes are permissible, even if we approve it and they decide to do something a little different.
That's correct.
Can be approved at staff level, so you can approve your own changes if you, okay. Thank you.
Just one, I'm going to, I'm going to take a couple of sentences and just restate, I personally have, using that area a lot over the many years, I really think, to look at a, at a circular flow through those two northerly lots. If you don't do it, that's okay, too, but I think it's worth thinking about.
Mr. Chairman, I think you're right, and I can already read the Facebook post about, you know, with the STUP word included. But anyway, like I said, you guys got to live with it, and I don't, anyway, I would find myself annoyed if, for whatever reason, I had to turn myself around when I was used to just driving the loop anyway.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, I guess, call the roll on the motion.
Mr. Marori?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Zuloff?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Castile?
Yes.
Mr. Pagali?
Yes.
Congratulations, city.
Thank you, thank you.
It looks like the next item on the agenda is FEMA and NFIP, whatever NFIP is, require changes to floodplain regulations, and this is many, many pages.
FEMA.
I know what FEMA is, but I don't know what NFIP is, but National Public Flood Insurance Program, probably. Is there a staff presentation, or?
There is.
Hello, Josh Schneider, Public Works Engineer. One of the hats I wear in engineering is floodplain administrator for the city of Sandusky, so several of you will recall, months ago, we went through our floodplain ordinance, updated it, revised some sections. We forwarded that on to FEMA, and FEMA combed through it, and what is before you is a revised set per FEMA, their exact ideal language. They changed some of what we thought was good language and made it, made it their standard. What we need to do, we're in a position now where the new mapping is to become effective September first, and so these changes directed by FEMA are needing to be incorporated, needing to be amended to our most recent ordinance. So I won't go over individually each term, each definition. Mr. Zuloff was probably drawn directly to the terminology that he and I agreed on, where there was previously used a hundred-year flood, and we, upon agreement, we thought it was better wording to be one percent annual chance flood. FEMA flipped that back, and you'll see both terms used, several instances are highlighted within this new ordinance, so.
Do they use it, they use a duplicate term in every case? Because my only concern in the past is that we were consistent, because we kind of changed some and not.
Not, not every case. I do have Alicia Silverio with ODNR on this Teams meeting, and she can address specific questions as to language needs.
Is there a technical difference between the two terms? Or are they identical?
And that's one, that's one I would prefer to defer to Alicia on. I know that was one of the reasons we changed it in the first place, was for consistency. And, and so, yeah, that went back. So Alicia, if you're still on, do you want to, do you want to chime in on that? No, she was having audio trouble earlier. Looks like she's unmuted.
By the way, I mean, my concern in the, was just a question of, you know, should this be consistent? So I'm sure we're going to have to defer to whatever FEMA wants it to say.
Just, and as an, as an item of note, there were changes that were made by this body and by staff that were approved. So this isn't, this isn't a purely boxed ordinance version. They did accept Planning Commission's recommendation in the eleven fifty-seven oh five appeals portion, where Planning Commission requested that upon the variance application, that the applicant supply information regarding how much they're varying from the base flood elevation. And so that language stayed and is in this version here in front of you. So it isn't, again, just to the point, that it's not entirely a boxed ordinance, but as you flip through, you'll see that it truly is terminology and definition amendments, and these are, these are what FEMA is telling us they need to be. What we, what we threaten to jeopardize ourselves is if this ordinance doesn't get passed with these approvals as marked, if this doesn't get passed, what we threaten is, is being kicked out of the National Flood Insurance Program. That's the NFIP acronym. We threaten to miss out on that, and obviously those who do pay flood insurance are at their own, at their own risk for getting different rates from different insurers.
That was going to be my question.
Yes.
So it's not that FEMA has the final say-so, the city has the final say-so, but FEMA has to say-so, if we don't accept what they come up with, we might not be in the flood insurance program.
Correct, and that's, and that's the federal program that allows those required to get flood insurance to shop any insurer and get the same rate.
Got you.
Not, not house to house, but from insurer A through insurer D, they're going to get the same price for their residents.
I don't suppose I could hope that they, I don't suppose they, we can, I can hope that they, next to the deletion of the freeboarding, can?
No, no.
All right, all right.
That was one of the amendments that was approved also, was the freeboard issue, which we discussed thoroughly.
The one I wish they would have rejected, but, anyway.
So I think what, if I'm understanding, what you're proposing is that we approve this language as resubmitted back to us by FEMA.
Correct.
And that's a recommendation to the city commission from this board?
Exactly.
Or this commission, I think.
Yes.
Okay.
So this is, this is considered edited and approved for Sandusky by FEMA.
Mr. Chairman, I had one question, and I think, did you, were you the one who cleaned these up, or was Mr. Hyde?
Initially, initially, we, initially I did. The highlights you see, though, those are truly markup from FEMA.
Okay.
With their specific wants.
I thought you did a good job of keeping things. I thought you did a good job of keeping things consistent. But I do have this one question. In Zone AO?
Yes.
Number one, can you give me example of where Zone AO is?
Yeah, I can. So that is described as...
It seems all I have here is the markup and no background or...
Well, in just...
Yeah, Zone AO specifically as it applies to Sandusky is about the mid of the Chaussee. That's the only AO zone in the city of Sandusky. What, in the definition, so I believe it's on page... On page five, Zone AO defined as special flood hazard areas inundated by the 100-year or 1% annual chance flood in any given year. With flood depths of 1 to 3 feet, usually showing, usually sheet flow on sloping terrain, average depths are to be determined. The middle of the Chaussee, there is an AO zone, and on the new mapping that will be effective September 1, it's spelled out that that is a 2-foot run-up. So what is considered in that area is wave action, wave action coming into that area, and in effect, or there's a de facto 2-foot freeboard on that middle section of the Chaussee.
Okay.
So when I have to consider construction in that area, I will take the base flood elevation into consideration plus the 2-foot run-up because it's in Zone AO.
And that was my question, and the way this reads, and I don't know if I'm following correctly or not, the structures shall have the lowest floor, including basement, elevated at least 2 feet above the highest adjacent natural grade.
What unnumbered page are you on?
I don't have a number, but it goes under the AO language. But my question is, if I'm following this, that's 2 feet above, if you had a basement, if you were gonna do like new construction, you'd have to go 2 feet up from the basement floor?
No, no. So the 2-foot addition is only relative to the base flood elevation. That's a set elevation that we have on Lake Erie in this area as it pertains to Sandusky. So what I have to consider is when an application comes in, our magic number is 577. So if the basement floor is not 579, the 577 plus 2 in that AO zone, then I cannot approve that floodplain permit for that structure.
Okay. I think what threw me was it's where it says the lowest floor, including basement.
Correct.
Floor, to me, that would say that is the base flood elevation, the lowest floor, the basement floor.
It is in every instance except the AO zone. Yeah, the AO zone is what adds it, and that's where it kind of kicks in and becomes a de facto freeboard
Yeah.
that we formerly had.
Okay.
So had we still had freeboard, that area that I just described to you in the middle of the Chaussee would have to be increased by 4 feet over the base flood elevation.
All right.
Had we still had freeboard, because it would take, our base flood elevation with freeboard is effectively our base flood elevation. You treat everything the same as our standard.
And it says where no data exists, that this was before the time where they were doing the floodplain maps and collecting data and whatnot?
So where there is no data is where they've not gone far enough to do that detailed research of wave action of, yeah, in fact, it's waves coming in from Lake Erie.
Okay.
So, yeah.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
I got just one question.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes. In your opinion, the changes that FEMA has made to this, would you say they were great changes, just some minute changes that they...
What's highlighted here?
Yes, yes.
I think they're very minor, and, you know, to the point, Mr. Zuloff and the 100-year 1% annual chance, that they're interchangeable, and so having both of them listed or one of them listed, it's minor, really.
Are you saying these are technical changes, not substantive changes?
Right.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, and I understand what we would need to do since we already, we recommended legislation, the City Commission approved or passed legislation, so we would need new legislation to change it again, right?
If I may, what we need from the Planning Commission, because this is a zoning, is your report and recommendation to City Commission on approval of these changes. At that point, City Commission will pass legislation.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think, Josh, I think your rep is on.
Yeah, I think Alicia was trying to talk, but we can't hear. I'm not sure.
Maybe the output speakers, maybe on the audio settings on the tablet?
I think it's the laptop.
Is it? Oh, or maybe just turn up the volume on the laptop.
Not Alicia, we're gonna try to figure this out real quick.
Can she hear us?
Can you hear us okay? Yes, okay, let me...
Get her audio's coming out of the three dots and see the audio settings. And then the speaker, instead of the display audio, I don't know.
I think if you select it.
Select the drop-down menu there under Speaker.
Well, this has never happened before.
Oh, I think it is. I think that's the right one.
Alicia, can you try speaking again?
Ken, are you able to hear me?
Yes. That works.
Oh, good. I have like two different computers and a phone that I've been trying to talk through. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. And so the review that we performed of Sandusky's regulations was to make it more closely aligned to the, our model, which has the minimum NFIP or National Flood Insurance Program criteria that's outlined in the Code of Federal Regulations. And so basically, that language is very closely aligned to what is in the Code of Federal Regulations. We were required to change our model regulations that we are using across the state in 2019 by FEMA. And so when you're seeing that we added back in the reference to 100-year flood, that's because that's how it's specifically stated in the Code of Federal Regulations, where the basic NFIP standards are contained. We didn't remove your reference to the 1% annual chance flood, but we're trying to create that nexus to the Code of Federal Regulations because it takes a lot to update the CFR. And so with the model, what we want is for Sandusky to have language that FEMA accepts that is meeting the minimum requirements of the NFIP. If there are any standards that the city would like to adopt to exceed the minimum criteria for participation in the flood insurance program, we can happily work with you on that. But our goal is to have these, have the community, have these regulations adopted and effective by that September 1 date so that the community can maintain its participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. Because communities that do not meet the deadline are, it is the fastest way to be suspended from the program, and that's across the nation, and that's how FEMA operates, with adoption of the regulations in association with a map change. So that is the basis for that. When communities want to customize and get, you know, nuances in the language, we're happy to talk about those, but we can't have anything that conflicts with the minimum NFIP criteria. You can always go higher, but we just don't want any, we can't approve anything that conflicts with the minimum criteria for participation. So that's a little bit of background on these regulations. The language that has been presented to Sandusky, and a lot of the changes that we observed were corrections of intertext references, there were code citations, the addition of definitions, some clarifications of some things. We need to make sure that there is language to address all the different types of data that you have. So now that you have V-zones, there needs to be the inclusion of the V-zone standards. You have AO zones, so we need to make sure that there's AO zone language. And so that's where you're gonna see the big changes in these regulations. Is it going to change how Sandusky administers their floodplain program overall? Not so much. Really, these are regulatory changes that every community that's being affected by the map change must undergo or must adopt. So that's why we're just very, you know, we stick very closely to the ordinance language unless there's something, you know, something that you want to work on that goes above and beyond. We just can't conflict with the minimum. But if there's any other questions or clarifications, please, now that we have audio working, I'd be happy to answer those.
I just have one question.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes. Currently, everyone that has FEMA flood insurance right now, by adopting these new rules and regulations, will it affect anyone?
So basically, what this, these regulations, if the city did not adopt them, the city would be suspended. What these regulations do is they provide the framework for how each community is going to administer their floodplain program across the state. So every community that has these regulations, they are, this is the framework, unless they have more stringent standards, which they are welcome to do. So it really is the foundation for your floodplain management program, which is the, you know, one of the basic requirements of participation in the NFIP. Participation in the NFIP makes flood insurance available to your residents as well as additional forms of disaster assistance. So in Sandusky, you have approximately, you have over 150 flood insurance policies for residents that provide, let me just check very quickly, I made a notation of this, almost $38 million worth of insurance coverage. And your number of losses that have been closed for the city are pretty high. You've had over 350 losses. So that's just some background information. These regulations are the same regulations that Erie County is adopting, that, let's see what other communities in Erie County are affected. So Bayview is adopting. Now, unless they don't have, I don't think Bayview has V-zones, so they aren't required to adopt the V-zone standards. But Erie County, Huron, Kelly's Island is looking at joining the NFIP, so we are in conversations with them. There are plenty of other counties that are going through this process as well, Ottawa County, Halden County, Van Wirt County. All of these communities and their municipalities are being asked to update the regulations to this language.
I don't know if that answered your question.
No, it did, it did.
I think the question was, I'm thinking, are the rates gonna change because...
Well, the people that already have flooded by adopting this, will it change anything about their insurance policies?
I understand your question. Thank you for that clarification. There have been some recent changes starting October 1st of last year, 2021, and the Phase 2 was implemented on April 1st of this year of Risk Rating 2.0, which changes how FEMA rates flood insurance policies across the nation. It's supposed to simplify the process of rating policies. It used to require about 150 pieces of information to rate a flood insurance policy. Now it's only about 50 pieces. About half the policies across the state of Ohio went down in cost. Approximately 45% of the policies in Ohio went up in cost, but about approximately $120 per year. And the goal of Risk Rating 2.0, and Risk Rating 2.0 is a national rating methodology. It has nothing to do with Sandusky updating their floodplain management regulations. It is somewhat separate, even though it is related. So the way that FEMA is rating flood insurance policies across the nation has changed, but it's supposed to make it more equitable so that individuals with lower-cost homes would pay less in flood insurance coverage than individuals with higher-cost homes, because it would be based on replacement cost value and et cetera. So this, the flood insurance rates are not tied to the level of regulations that Sandusky has adopted.
Well, I think Mr. Jackson was asking about the impact of our standards here, not the changes to the FEMA and National Flood Plane Insurance Programs. But in any event, the changes that we're presented with here have no downside, I understand, for the people of Sandusky, and the upside is we're insured continued participation.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. So the short answer is no, right?
All right.
No.
That's what I was looking for, yes or no?
No.
Mr. Bajali?
Mr. Chairman, a different question, but maybe I'm asking the same thing. If we didn't approve these, then, and we were removed from the program, those costs would go up, right?
There would be no flood insurance in your community and disaster assistance would be limited.
Certainly no.
But everybody would be on their own to try to get some flood insurance, right?
It would not be available in your community.
Oh, okay.
At all.
And then it would be difficult to get a loan if you were in a floodplain or floodway or something like that. The banks probably would require it.
Well, so flood insurance is required where flood insurance is available. And so if flood insurance is not available in your community because you were not participating, it wouldn't be required, although lenders may not choose to make loans on structures in high-risk areas that they could not recover their losses on.
Okay.
That answers your question.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
To keep this rolling, could I make a motion that we recommend these changes to the City Commission, that the Planning Commission recommend these changes to the City Commission?
Thank you. Second, Mr. Miller. Any discussion on that motion now that it's been moved and seconded? I would ask the Secretary to call the roll.
Mr. Magori?
Yes.
Mr. Miller? Mr. Zuloff?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Castile?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
It's unanimous, so we've recommended it to the City Commission.
Let the minutes show.
Let the minutes show, correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. There we are. So next on the written agenda is the possibility of an update on where we stand on the transient rental property regulation. I don't know if there is an actual update or if you want to make a comment, if staff wants to make comment.
Sure, I'll mention that we've continued to meet with the subsection of planning commissioners that kind of volunteered to talk about this and connecting with the Law Department. So we want to get this right. We're not ready to make any formal recommendations. Every idea we have opens up more and more questions because zoning gets really technical really quickly. If we do any sort of update, if that would require an ordinance change, which is a long process. So these things take time, and we thank you for your patience, and like I said, it's an important issue, and we want to get it right.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Zuloff?
I will comment in another way. This insight came to me in the shower or something like that. So we have to consider the possibility that it's a pretty good ordinance, and making no changes is a legitimate option. And maybe some of our problems are self-inflicted, and maybe it's not a problem with the ordinance, but our behavior. And what I would say is, if you keep shooting yourself in the foot, you don't need a different gun, you'd need to change your behavior, right? So I think we can make some tweaks in policy and solve a lot of these problems, but that's just my opinion. And I could be wrong, but that's, we have to consider that possibility. And, and I could be wrong, but that's, we have to consider that possibility.
I, I would make the observation, and I've, I just said this break before the meeting in an individual conversation, but I think conceptually, you, you don't want unlimited transient housing. So the question is, do you limit it, limit it by numbers? I think at the other end of the equation, there needs to be, up to, up to whatever that maximum is, there needs to be a plan forward for people who are interested in trying to do it. So I do think it's important for us to reexamine the whole concept and at the same time, take a look at the existing statute and, and just see where we, where we want to go. And I don't know that there's one right answer. So I, I think what we're doing with, with coming up with ideas, everybody's going to have a diff, I may have a different idea than what's presented by the Subcommittee. And that doesn't mean I'm right and they're wrong, or that they're right and I'm wrong. But again, I think there is some limit and, and we, we start with the maximum and then work back to where we think we're comfortable, I guess.
Well, we need to make it easier on the public, because if we have enough rules and regulations for the general public to take a look at this, took, take a look at these and say, hey, we don't qualify, so no use going down there applying for, uh, transient rentals because we don't, we don't, we don't meet all the qualifications. But they don't know. We, they don't, when they, when they come down, I mean, I'm sure how, they haven't probably done a, a ton of investigating, just want their, be able to rent their properties out. But if we make it a lot simpler for them to understand what the rules and regulations are, then we wouldn't be bombarded by all these individuals that want to have transient rentals.
Well, that's, that's kind of my point, Mr. Jackson. The, uh, if somebody says, may I do this in my neighborhood? The answer is no. It would, you'd have to change the law to allow it, because it would take legislation, unlike many other things that you can apply for a permit or apply for a variance, whatever. It would take legislation unless we, you're already in a, uh, transient rental overlay district. So the simple answer is no, you can't do it. Now, if you, you know, if you can lobby somebody for a change to the legislation, well, that's, there's, there's a reason, it was part of the design to, most of our, uh, uh, planning and zoning laws or, or the, most of the zoning, um, it can be changed by application, can be, or zoning can be initiated, let me try, start again. A zoning change can be initiated by the City Commission, the Planning Commission, or the owner. The overlay district can only be initiated by the Planning Commission or the City Commission because you, it would make no sense to allow an owner to propose changes to 99 neighbors, right? So, um, of course, it's going to happen informally, but if, if, if someone wants to lobby the City Commission or Planning Commission to propose a, a district, that's fine, but the idea that, um, you know, and any individual can petition for legislation, but it, the, the short answer is no, you can't do it because the law doesn't allow it. So you got to get the law changed. That's different than all these other zoning regulations.
Through the chair, if I may?
Yes.
Just a couple, um, points I wanted to call out. So we are limiting them to Mr. Magori's point that we have existing regulation that limits transient rentals to the transient rental overlay district and six zoning districts where it is currently allowed. Then to Mr. Jackson's point, we, we've been hopefully continuing to improve on how we've been communicating to this, to the community and people that are interested. There is a website, cityofsandusky.com/transientrental for anyone listening can read the existing ordinance. And there's a map that shows the six zoning districts where it's currently permitted: downtown business, commercial recreation, commercial services, general business, roadside business, and residential business. There's a lot of property in the city where it's currently allowed and we, we do our best to communicate that to people when they give us a call. There are, the, the one mechanism that's available is rezoning process, which we have pursued a few times when staff thinks that's reasonably appropriate, but they could, you know, applicants can place a rezoning application if they wanted to be in a district where transient rental is allowed. We have a lot of districts where it is allowed and been trying to communicate that very clearly to people that are interested. So I just want to add a few comments. Thank you.
I might comment or make an observation. So I have to believe that the original transient overlay district was initiated, at least informally, by the people that had property there.
No, it wasn't.
Well, they were starting to do it before it existed.
Well, that would be, sure, okay. That's one way of framing it as initiated by, by, by violating the law.
And, and so the, the city then reacted to that and came up with the concept of a transient overlay district. So my, my point is that there's still, as staff indicated, there, one way is a zoning change to get, get in the, a zone where you can do it. Another way would be, and that's what we have to fine tune, how do you pursue? I'm not saying you're going to get it. I'm not saying it's going to be granted, but how does one pursue? And I guess the way right now is to approach a Planning Commission member who would propose it, or a City Commission member who would propose it for a transient overlay district. How does one end up with one of those? And number one, I don't think you can be the only person in that district and, and expect to have it happen.
Right.
Then the question is, what are the dimensions of it? And that's what we've been struggling with. And I think it's not logical to say there's no way to end up with another transient overlay district up to a certain absolute maximum number. As I, I said to Aaron before the meeting, I don't think we want more than 50 percent. I'm just using it, an extreme number, more than 50% transient rental of the entire residences in this, that's, that's an absurd number, but how, how short of that as a maximum do you want to do? But I think it's not logical to say there can never be another transient overlay district. So if I'm correct in that regard, how do we approach those other potential transient? We have to figure out a way to do that. And I don't know that the current statute adequately addresses that, so.
Well, the general public's perception of that, that's not how they're perceiving it. They're saying that if I get a couple of neighbors to say yes, then it's a done deal. So that's why we need some, some stringent guidelines so they know exactly what it takes.
What it takes is legislation. There are centuries of, of precedent on how to get legislation done, okay? And, and there are a lot of different ways to do it, but, um, you know, you, I don't get to walk into the State House or into U.S. Congress and propose legislation either. I gotta, I gotta, I gotta get an elected official to propose it. So, you know, we're not, I don't know why we're reinventing the wheel here. It's, it's, it's written the way it is by design and I think it can work once we start thinking of it the right way.
So we're back to the Subcommittee, I think.
Mr. Chairman, uh, just, just a footnote to this conversation. I, I don't think there's anything that's been said here tonight that we haven't considered in our Subcommittee. So I guess all we're asking is just be a little more patient and, and we're close, but sometimes when you get close, at the last minute, you start to think, oh, oh, what about this? We don't want to have something approved or considered where there might be a loophole or we didn't cover all the bases. That's, that's all we're asking. And if, and if we have to wait another month, uh, we've waited this long, I don't, I don't think we're doing any damage to anybody. That's, that's just my comment, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for your work.
Yeah, I'm not even sure we need this on the agenda. I think our Subcommittee can let us know when they got something, so.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm going to move on to the next item on the agenda. It's old business and it deals also with transient rental, um, an app, an application by Ron DeJackzich for a zoning amendment, and that was tabled at the May 2015 meeting. And I think it was tabled, as I recollect, to wait for an update on an overall game plan. So it's on the table right now unless somebody on this commission wants to move to take it off the table for one reason or another.
So this is a technical question. Submitted an application for an amendment, right? I will ask the Law Department, should we even be hearing that?
Which, which one are we talking about?
Uh, the first item on, under old business.
I wasn't aware that there were any applications for an amendment.
No, this, this was a tabled application under old business. It was tabled previously. I don't think.
It's just on the agenda to be readdressed here.
She submitted it as a rezoning.
Oh, you're not talking about the?
Not the public hearings. No, it's the rezoning application.
Okay. What's your question about the tabled?
Okay, it was, so, so we have to hear that, right? The owner, well, the, the question there was the owner submitted an application, that's proper, for, for, for the owner's property.
Correct.
The, uh, application was also for an adjoining property, which there was a question as to whether that was a proper application, because the, only the owner may apply. You can't, you can't apply for rezoning your neighbor's property. And that's what was effectively happening there. And the Law Department was going to get back to us on, or, or we were going to wait and see. I'd be, um, what, I don't know, I don't know where, where that stood, but the, the problem, there was a question about the propriety because the owner of the adjoining property, who did not make the application, uh, wrote a letter of conditional approval.
It was, the question was whether she was an authorized agent to submit the rezoning for his property, which my recollection is that Law Department said no.
Yeah, the answer to that was no.
And has she submitted any other?
And I think it was tabled to see if something else would get submitted.
So I think, I think, I don't know how we could, we, we'd still have that, we still have that question unanswered then. I don't know how we could hear anything on that, or continue on that.
Through the chair, if I may, there's been no additional information that staff's received regarding that.
Right.
There has been no additional, if, if there's not, there's never been a verified statement submitted by the owner of the other parcel allowing the other person to represent them as an applicant.
Nor an application from the?
So there is actually no application for that second parcel.
Right. So that, that application would have to be amended, uh, so there's no, nothing to hear anymore on that one, right?
Well, I mean, if I may, it's, it's on the table. I think we can take it off the table and approve it, deny it, or leave it on the table.
So if, uh, there is no proper application for the one parcel, so Planning Commission could remove it from the table, consider the parcel that is, that the applicant is the owner of, so amend the rezoning, um, which is something we rarely do. Or you could make a report and recommendation only for that parcel. You could deny the whole thing, but, uh, we don't have the legal authority to make a rezoning for the other parcel.
Right. And we can't really leave it on the table. I, I think our, because we have to answer the application because at least part of it is legitimate. So in my opinion, we gotta, we gotta turn it down. I mean, it wouldn't be legal to say yes.
Take it off the table.
Uh, or, or convince the owner to either amend the application or withdraw it.
I, I would suggest.
I, I was, a sort of question for.
Oh.
I, well, I didn't understand that as a question, so I'm sorry. What was, what are you asking?
Well, it wouldn't be proper for us to approve it. That wouldn't be legal. It wouldn't be proper for us to ignore it and do nothing because it's, it is an application. We do have to rule on it. We could, I think, is that correct?
Yes, Planning Commission does have to take action on applications.
The, the clear path would be to simply deny the application because it's not proper. The, before we did that, the applicant would have the option of amending the application to make it proper, uh, and then we could have a serious discussion about it. Uh, or, or the, the applicant could, we could have a discussion and ask them to either withdraw it or amend the application.
I think I'm understanding that he was saying you could just make a ruling on her parcel that she?
I'm not saying, I'm saying that would be improper. We can't.
I, that is not what I said. So I said the only thing that the Planning Commission does not have the authority to consider is the parcel that there was no verified statement for.
Sure.
Thank you.
So the parcel that is owned by the applicant can be considered by the Planning Commission. And if, if your report and recommendation is to approve or deny a rezoning just for that parcel, it can move through the process.
Right, which would be a very different application because I believe it was, the applicant did not own the corner one, so they would sort of have it isolated, rather than being on the corner.
I, I don't know the merits of the application off the top of my head, but.
Okay, all right.
That, that, I think Mr. Zuloff is correct in his assessment of that.
That there would be a zone, an island zone, sort of? That might be, yeah.
I, I would recommend leaving it on the table so that the staff has time to contact the owner and say, hey, what do you want to do here? Because we can't, we can't move on what you want.
So you also do have the option of making no ruling on it and denying it, sorry, denying it. And if the owner wants to apply only for their own parcel, that is technically a new, different application because it is not the same application as what is before you now. So your denial of this current application in its entirety would not stop someone from coming back.
Can we deny it today or we have to bring it back next meeting?
If I may?
I would say you can deny it today.
I would recommend leaving it on the table for one more month. It's, I don't see any harm in doing that, letting staff reach out to the applicant, see if this, this corner lot wants to give, formalize an approval or join in the application, and then, then we make a decision rather than denying it and then we're going to potentially end up with another reapplication.
It seems like staff has a perspective on this.
I would just want to confirm that the applicant did speak to Mr. Oaks after the last meeting and she understood the circumstances and the question that you had and has not provided any additional information from us. But we did have a touch point with her after the last meeting.
Did, did we close the?
To the point that, that we needed some further input from the other property?
Yeah, we, yes, it was reiterated to her that, that she, the letter, what she submitted to be an authorized agent for that corner parcel was not valid.
So, so if, my question then would be, if, if the public hearing part was closed, can we rule tonight or do we have to kick it, the can down the road?
So I will say, the only reason that you, we kicked the can down the road is we followed the guidelines of Robert's rules, but if the chair decides that, that the commission would like to hear this, that is absolutely within your power to vote to untable it and take some final action forward, one way or the other.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we take this off the table so that we can take some action next month.
I would like to hear a recommendation from staff if they're satisfied that, that they've done all they need to do to communicate to this applicant. If, if they feel that that's the case, then I would agree with your motion. Is there any reason to reach out one more time?
I did reiterate to the applicant the circumstances, um, more or less immediately after the last meeting. There was not been a second touch point since then. She did understand, as far as I'm concerned, that the circumstances that she needed to follow to have a legitimate hearing. So staff's personal opinion is unclear based on what we have in front of us.
I'm confident, based on what I heard Mr. Howells say, that if you deny this one outright, she could apply again, so we're not ending her ability to apply.
I would also.
I have a comment. Sorry, go ahead.
I would also point out that it might not be necessary to, um, the only thing that we would, additional information that we would need from the original applicant would be a legitimate verified statement, which hasn't been provided. That's the only missing piece to, to consider this application in, in a whole. If that's never provided, the application then becomes just for the one parcel that the person owns, at which. the person owns, at which point Planning Commission has a decision to decide if they want that to be a rezoning or not. And if Planning Commission has concerns because it might create an island, you might be able to answer that question simply tonight by denying it, which you would be in essence saying, we're not even willing to rezone your parcel alone. It's just something to consider, to maybe expedite some finality to this proceeding.
Through you, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr.--
Thank you. I would like to continue to keep this on the table, going back to the original reason of us establishing clear guidelines for reviewing these applications. If we did reach out to the applicant and say, hey, is there anything you want to do? Can you do all this extra legwork? And then when we get our guidelines here in paper, and then her parcels don't fit anyway, that seems like a waste of her time, our time. So I, in my opinion, would like to see everything that has to do with these zoning changes with regard to transient, tabled until we have these guidelines that give us that uniformity and that consistency in our decision-making process that we were kind of lacking thus far, creating all of these different case-by-case scenarios.
I would agree with the Commissioner, but point out that we can lay it back, right back on the table--
We can. I just, we were suggesting calling the applicant and getting her to do more legwork.
What I'm trying to say is, go ahead, take it off the table, put it right back on the table if we want to at the next meeting, let's leave our options open.
I'm not opposed to that, and I'm not opposed to denying the application and letting the applicant reapply with just her parcel. It's just to say, let's reach out and make her do all this legwork, and we potentially, the parcel may not fit into the guidelines that we're working on right now.
I'd like to comment. I'm not certain that this corner parcel wouldn't join in this if that was clear. Now, maybe it's not going to happen, but I just don't see a problem with leaving it on the table, having staff make a contact and say, look, you either get this guy to join in, in the way it needs to be done, or we're left with spot zoning, which it may not be approved anyway. And Ms. Castile, I agree with you, there's some other things being discussed on the overall transient overlay, but this is just an application for a zoning change, and it doesn't really, I mean, we can take into account why she says she wants it, but it's an application for zoning change. So I'd say just leave it on the table for a bunch of reasons, one more month, and just make a contact and say what's going to happen.
Mr. Chairman, just to that point, I know we did discuss that same point last time, and we were talking about, yes, that's a zoning change, but how far are we going to go with this contiguous, you know, we approved this one, now we're approving this, and it's just, so that was where we were kind of, I know it's not the same, but they're working in tandem, in my opinion, to have like consistent guidelines moving forward.
Unless we say we're never going to make zoning changes, we're always going to have people apply for zoning changes.
Sure. This is my opinion.
But sure, just a point of order, and maybe the letter, I can correct me if I'm wrong, but we're in danger of actually we're getting into discussing a matter that's on the table, right? So not just discussing the procedure, we've got nothing to say. Either someone makes a motion for each one of these to take them off the table, or we don't talk about them. That is the way I read Robert's Rules of Order.
Again, Robert's Rules of Order are just a suggestion, so it's up to the Chair if you guys want to keep discussing.
Just to see, yeah.
Well, we're kind of going round and round.
Sure.
Does anybody want to make a motion to take it off the table?
I did. Nobody had a chance to second it, because we--
Does anybody want to second the motion?
Then it stays. Mr. Chairman, I move that we take the second, the other item, the public hearing to consider transient rental, along East Washington Street off the table.
Did you say off the table? Did you say off the table?
To take it off the table so that we can discuss it in the next meeting.
So just for, clearly, the first one was still staying on the table.
Well, nobody seconded it, so that would--
Yeah, that motion dogged.
I think it's worth staying with the results.
Okay.
All right, so now you're moving on to the next item, and you just moved to take that off the table. Is there a second to Mr. Zuloff's motion?
So I guess you say hearing no second.
Okay, hearing no second, I guess that stays on the table.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the third item, the public hearing to consider trending bounded by West Monroe Street and so forth, be taken from the table.
Off the table. Is there a second on that motion? Hearing no second, that stays on the table.
There, see now we're done. That was easy, right?
Okay. Ask the other person. Hearing none, I guess--
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't ask the group in the, would it be proper for them, if they wanted to say something, to say something?
I'm certainly willing to let them comment. They're here. I'm always interested in hearing what people have to say. Anybody in the back have anything to add?
It sounds like we made the last--
No, that's the G-Bray. Right.
Right, everything that stayed on the table.
Which matter, sir, were you concerned about?
Monroe Street area.
Monroe Street won't even be heard at the next meeting, if I understand it correctly. We could take it off the table at the next meeting, so it won't be considered if, at all, if we took it off the table in July, it would be heard in August. Am I right, Mr. Chairman or Mr. Lotterer?
That's generally how tabling works, yes.
Yeah, right. But for the benefit, so earliest, it could, it might show up in August, but it won't show up in July.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Adjourn.
Well, good job on the challenge.